The meeting is called to order. It looks like we don't have any electronic participation. Dr. Day, pledge of allegiance, please.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Next one is approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Mrs. Lowry? Mr. Andrews? Yes.
I want to move that we make an amendment to the agenda. We need to add in additional, in the consent agenda, an additional human resources report.
I'll second that. And just for clarification, that additional human resource item will come after the closed session. So that's why you don't see it in your package. It will become public after the closed session.
Right.
Is there a, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll for the amended amendment?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, we have an amended agenda for approval. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Move we approve the amended agenda.
Dr. Day? Mr. Andrews? Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, I will not have any comments. We have a long agenda today. So Ms. Finney, special presentation. Welcome to School Board, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gupta, Dr. Day, members of the School Board. I want to thank you all for allowing me the time to come today to talk about the School Board appointment process for this year. Council has had some time to weigh in on this. And really, this is just a way for me to reach your audience, so I appreciate that. Each year, Council points three members, one for each district. Mr. Andrews in District One and Dr. Day in District Two. You all will be concluding your term this year and have indicated not interested in serving another. So, thank you very much for your service to the community. Three years is a long time. Ms. Preston in District Three. This is the end of your first term. You are eligible to serve two terms after this. And if you are interested in serving again, you'll be subject to the same process I'll be outlining today. City Council will hold their first public hearing on May 13th. State code dictates that the names must be read into the record in order to be eligible. So what this looks like is I'll be collecting applications up until the May 13th public hearing. I'll read those into the record. Historically, Council has held a second public hearing or laid over a public hearing for a second public hearing on May 27th. We've held that space. Once they've closed that, that time period, the application period will be closed for this year. So again, I'll be collecting applications up until that point. Again, at the close of that public hearing, they can begin to select candidates if they so wanted. But we will hold space in the June 10th City Council meeting for them to finalize that selection. We'll be holding interviews at the time between the June 10th and June 24th meetings. So that's June 11th, June 23rd. Haven't figured out those dates yet. And then on June 24th, appointments will be made during your general business meeting. Next slide? Thank you. So what to expect? I will be accepting applications through the close of those public hearings. At the public hearing, applicants are encouraged to appear before City Council, really just to speak about their qualifications and let Council know who they are. Parents and community members are also encouraged to appear before Council to speak on those candidates and their qualifications as well. New this year, candidates chosen for an interview will be required to confirm residency. We'll be asking or taking both traditional and alternative methods to approve that, taking into account people with maybe non-traditional housing arrangements. Interviews will be held in the open meeting, so it's open to the public and also livestreamed. Council deliberations and appointments, again, also in an open meeting and livestreamed. And then state and national criminal background checks will be done for those who are selected. So what's on our School Board application? We'll be capturing just our general contact information and your warden district. We ask two questions. What experience do you offer as a candidate for the Lynchburg School Board? And what do you feel you would contribute to the Lynchburg School Board and the community if appointed? There is an option to upload a resume, although it's strongly encouraged. And then these are not, applications are not made available to the public citing personnel information, but it will be on record that you have applied. And then QR code and where to find our application are to the left. That is really all I have for you all. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you again and just reach out to your audience for it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Any questions for her? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is LCS Computer Science Scholarship, Dr. Copeland.
I'm looking, there she is.
Thanks, Dr. Copeland. Good evening, Chairperson Gupta, Vice Chair Day, and School Board members. My name is Dawn Wise. I'm the Executive Director of the Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation, and I am so excited to be here to announce the inaugural 2025 Lynchburg City Schools Computer Science Scholarship recipient. I would first like to share a bit about how we are so fortunate to be able to offer this new scholarship opportunity. In December 2023, longtime education foundation donor Linda Carr and her husband Clarence James donated $100,000 to the foundation to create two funds. A $25,000 Vivian Carr Miller Excellence Through Education Fund and a $75,000 Carr-James Family Community Service Fund. These funds are being used to remove barriers to learning for Lynchburg City Schools students, address and provide basic needs, and advance career and technical education opportunities for students and graduates. Linda and Clarence did this because they were committed to supporting the causes they hold dear. Indeed, giving back is a cornerstone of Linda and her sister Vivian's lives, instilled from a very early age by their family. At this time, I'd like to invite up Linda, Clarence, and Vivian to speak a little bit more about this.
Hello. My name is Linda Carr.
Clarence James.
Clarence James.
And I'm Vivian Miller.
Hi. My sister's gonna talk the most. The only thing that I, you know her, so, okay. The only thing that I'd like to say is that we give back because we're hoping others will see it and others will do so as well. I mean, it's easy to give. You don't have to have a lot of money or anything. It's just your heart. You just need to put your heart into it. And I hope that other people will see it and be encouraged, and they will do the same.
This is the baby sister, and I'm the oldest, but she pushes also. I am so happy to be here this evening. Lynchburg City Schools and Lynchburg City Community in itself just means a lot to me. I think the majority of you, if you know me, you know that. It's a very special place. It's a very special place for people that come here outside of our community, college work, whatever, university of whatever, and for whatever reason, they try not to leave. So, you know, we know that it is expanding, and it's a wonderful place. And I just want to thank my baby sister for all that she's done. And even though you're hearing what she's doing today, I kind of keep, it's the stuff, and this is, well, I don't even know what you say. I just, I just throw things in a bucket or in a, but that says TMR. And TMR, and it's kind of folded over. Technical Management Resource Corporation. And Linda started that 1999. But even before that, and that's her business, that's her IT business. And even, she's retired. She's retired. But, you know, we've always been very proud of her. We're proud of all five of us. But I am very proud of Linda because she has gone, and she's persevered over a lot of obstacles to get where she is today, her and her husband and her family. One of the things I have in this folder, I guess you might call them artifacts. So I started to open up the folder, and it says something like Technical Management Resource Incorporated. And then, this is way back, where she donated $1,000. Pam Smith Johnson was there at this particular time, so that's, and that was to the Paddle Program. $1,000. Linda Barnett was the principal at Darrington Elementary School at that particular time. And I do believe the library had flooded out or something like that, and $1,000 there. I don't think this organization exists any longer, but it's called, it was called Timothy Club. And Linda worked at the Timothy Club. I worked at Camp Kumbaya. So, but she was in her city, you know, so she had the toughest, I guess you might say, assignment. But Timothy Club was donated 1,500. Black Theater Ensemble was donated 500. Specs, that was an organization was led by Kelvin Moore at that particular time. I cannot tell you, it was for young students, high school students. I cannot tell you what the acronym was for. And then I have Education Foundation, Bob Dozier, $5,000. So this is how far, and I did not make this up. I did not print this up. I came, it's on old paper. So that's going back, I believe that's probably going back to 2002. And then the theme for that particular time is children believe what they're told. Then I have a 2002 where it's from, no, I'm not going through all of it. Bob Dozier is just a thank you. Then I have a OOO Partners in Education where she was highlighted for the resources that she had donated to Darrington. Then I have from Cynthia Page, who was at that particular time, the Chief Financial Officer. Some correspondence from her. Then I have the Title of Proposal for Desi, and everything is itemized out, what was donated and what was requested. And the theme of that program, it takes a family to teach a child. And by the way, I would like to say that we grew up in Darrington, and went to Darrington Elementary, and we lived in the first brown door next to the office in what they would call the projects. So I just want to let you know that.
So I might interrupt you for a minute?
Go ahead.
The, the thing, the fact, it's a fact, that children believe what they're told. You tell them how great they are, and they will be great. You tell them how special they are, and they will be special. You tell them how successful they can be, and they will be successful. My goal has always been to ensure that children know how special and great and successful they can be. And that's what we strive to ensure that they have, that they take with them wherever they go. They believe what you say. So everything you say is important when you're talking to a child.
Okay. And I'll just wind this up very quickly, but there is another piece of correspondence. It's to Linda, Ms. Carr, from Roger Jones. CC Vivian Miller, CC Dr. James T. McCormick, Superintendent, Dr. Paul McHendrick, Deputy Superintendent, and Ms. Pam Smith Johnson. So that's going way back. But I want you to, just to let you know that this is in our DNA as our family. This is what we do. It does not have to be about money. It's about your resources, your time, your energy, your sweat equity. It's what you're willing to donate. And then if you have some financial monies, then you put it out there, and hopefully for children, for the betterment of our community. We have a lot of places that we can place $25, $30, $50. I can think of Jubilee. I can think of Boys and Girls Club. I can think of Lynchburg City Schools Ed Foundation. I can think of Camp Kumbaya. So there are many other children's organizations that exist in our community and even outside of a community. I also want to add that this is not the only place that she donates. There's other places outside of, in her own community, because she lives in Northern Virginia, in Fairfax, Virginia. So she brought it back home, and I'm so glad she did. And I want you, they're not people. I have to get up here and I have to blow and toot the horn for them because they are not the type that's going to do that. They've been doing this for a very long time. No one's heard about it. No one's heard about it. Why? Because they didn't stand up and say, "I'm gonna toot my horn." So I want to make sure, I want to make sure that people know not just the Carr-James family, but all the way back to my mother and my father and even before that. If we had a little, we gave a little of what we had. And that's what it's all about. And we really appreciate, I always say when we're doing something for service and service oriented, is that thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Right, that's true.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve. And thanks, Dawn. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Savannah for being so smart.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't know if I need to, yeah, I think I do. So thank you, Linda, Clarence, and Vivian. Over the past year and a half, the Foundation has worked closely with the family to make informed decisions about using these precious dollars in the best way possible to address the most pressing needs in our school, as well as creating new opportunities for students otherwise have not existed before. The Fund has provided scholarships for African-American students in memory of their parents, Mary Catherine Robert Weldon Carr Sr., scholarships for former students of Fort Hill Community School who have transitioned back to their base school, and starting in the fall of 2025, providing essentials such as hygiene items and undergarments for students at Perrymont Elementary, and uniforms for every single family in need, including the 86 new students at Bass Elementary. And the reason why we are here tonight, the establishment of the first significant need-based scholarship at the Education Foundation with a focus on students who wish to pursue a degree in the computer science field with a total award amount of $15,000. A little bit about the requirements for the scholarship. It is awarded to the top computer science student as determined by a comprehensive application process, to someone with outstanding grades in computer science-related courses, who demonstrates a deep passion for computer science, and who has created and mastered available computer science opportunities, and who has a strong computer science vision for their future. This, this application process, as I mentioned, is rigorous and culminates with the top finalists completing a 30-minute in-person interview with the Scholarship Selection Committee, where they are asked an established set of questions. I would like to note that during this interview, our winner not only brought her resume, but left us a thank you card at the end. Excellent matters. This year's recipient is an outstanding Heritage High School graduating senior and cybersecurity teaching assistant enrolled in advanced cybersecurity classes, who plans to pursue a career in computer science at Randolph College with an emphasis on game development and a minor in studio art. In addition to her exemplary academic career, she most recently competed in the extemporaneous speaking state competition at Skills USA, where she was awarded the gold medal and will be advancing to the Nationals in June. Aside from her incredible extracurricular activities such as curating a personal collection of 1,000 books, playing the ukulele and electric guitar, writing, and in her own words, loves computers, and this is a passion I've had more than a decade, and this was so evident as she talked about her cybersecurity class with Mr. Bill Carter, who is here. "I still remember the first time I walked into the classroom. My eyes may as well have been saucers with how starstruck I was. So many computers, so many lights, so many headsets, and wait, is that a drone? I was beyond excited, and Mr. Carter matched my enthusiasm to a T. But it was the heart for this work that goes, that goes beyond the technology that made us realize, Mom, this was our scholarship winner." I quote from her letter of interest. I'm sorry, I should be more professional. "One of my biggest ambitions is to create pathways for women of color in the tech industry. It's disheartening to see the underrepresentation in fields like computer science." This is not sad, it's amazing. And I want to change the narrative. A lot of people go into the field of computer science for the financial stability, but this means so much more to me. I'm doing this for my mom, who supported me through every endeavor. Reed, do you want to come up for me? I'm sorry. "I'm doing this for the little black girls who may see me and think, 'I can do this too.' I'm doing it for the little me who had, God bless. I'm doing it for the little me who had no black stream role models and thought, 'I don't know if I can.'" And I will quote her last sentence in her letter as I introduce our recipient. "Oh, you can, Savannah. I promise you, you can." "It is my privilege and honor to announce the inaugural recipient of the newly established Lynchburg City Schools Computer Science Scholarship, Savannah Hicks."
Guys, I don't cry when I'm happy. What is this? I blame Dawn. Oh, my gosh. Thank you. Okay, I have a speech, but I don't really think I can, like, top the introduction she just gave me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Savannah Hicks, and I'm deeply honored to accept the LCS Computer Science Scholarship. I want to begin by extending my sincere gratitude to the School Board for this recognition, and most importantly, to the Carr-James.
I'm here to help.
Thank you to the Carr-James family for your generosity and belief in students like me. This scholarship is more than financial support. It's a powerful encouragement to keep pushing forward, and I'm truly thankful for that. I also want to extend my appreciation to Coordinator Dawn Wise for her tireless dedication in organizing this opportunity and supporting students throughout the application process. Her commitment doesn't go unnoticed, and it has made a real difference in my journey. This fall, I'll be attending Randolph to major in computer science with an emphasis in game development. Along the way, I've been fortunate to have mentors who have guided and inspired me. Mr. Carter, my cybersecurity team, has played a huge role in my growth. He's been a steady source of knowledge, motivation, and support. But my greatest supporter has always been my mom. Her constant, her constant encouragement has carried me through every milestone, and I wouldn't be here without her. Receiving this scholarship is a powerful reminder that I'm not on this path alone. As I take the next steps in my academic and professional journey, I do so with deep gratitude and a strong desire to pay it forward. Thank you again to the Carr-James family, Coordinator Wise, Mr. Carter, and everyone who has supported me. I will carry this honor with pride and with purpose. To Ms. Hester and Ms. Boswell, thank you for the interview pep and the endless support. You two have made every step possible, and I'm so appreciative. To the lovely people at the Beacon of Hope's Future Center, I cannot even begin to count the number of essays they've read over, supporting me through every meticulous detail. As I stand here before you, I accept this award not just for myself, but on behalf of every teacher, every secretary, and every LCS staff member. Each of you has played a role in my journey, and I hope to make you proud. I'd like to close with a quote by Thurgood Marshall that means a great deal to me. "None of us got where we are solely by pulling ourselves up by our bootstraps. We got here because somebody, a parent or a teacher, bent down and helped us." Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you.
Do you mind if we do that quickly? I know we're running short on time, and then we're gonna just take a picture.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next one is student representative comments, Dr. Copeland.
Good evening. This evening, we will start with, I guess we'll start with Heritage tonight. For the board, this is the last evening that our wonderful students will be joining us. The next board meeting is kind of in the middle of their last day or two of school. And as seniors, they will probably already be checked out of the building waiting on graduation at that point. So, Ms. Hester, please.
I hope everybody's doing well. But before I start, I just want to say that was just, it was just so beautiful to see somebody who's so passionate about, like, school and what they do. So I just want to say congratulations to Savannah Hicks again. So, first off, I wanted to highlight the senior dinner because that's such a huge accomplishment. Congratulations to all the top 15 seniors from Heritage and Glass. On Sunday, these scholars were celebrated at a senior honors dinner at Randolph. All of these students are exceptional, and we can't wait to see what their future holds for them. So congratulations again to our top 15 seniors. So for spring sports, our boys soccer team is currently four to six. Our girls soccer team is currently two to 10. Our boys baseball team is currently zero to four, but they're doing great work up there. Our girls softball team is also zero to five, but they're, they're pushing really hard. Our boys tennis team is nine to four, and our girls tennis team is seven to two. I also want to say our track team is also doing very well as well. They are, many athletes have gained new personal records in their personal events. So great job to all of these students, and keep up the great work. So our ice cream social, I had the pleasure of doing that. During April, our HHS Leadership Class decided to host an ice cream social for the entire school before spring break. It was a fun opportunity to be able to play games and socialize at the ice cream social. It was also amazing to be able to serve almost 300 students. It was also really cool, like, to be able to scoop the ice cream and stuff. I wasn't expecting it to be as hard as what I thought it was, but it was really hard. Thank you again to Leadership and their amazing sponsor, Mrs. Gafford. Our Career Fair, also during the month of April, we hosted a Career Fair for all students to come and view different career opportunities. It was a great opportunity, and it was a great success as well. We had many seniors be able to be called in for interviews with different companies that were at the fair. So congratulations to all the students who were able to hear from many of the jobs there, and it was a great opportunity. Thank you again for allowing students like me to be able to speak and just let you know more about Heritage. And also, I want to have a huge shout out to our teachers for Teachers Appreciation Week. So thank you, and have a great day in number one big orange country.
All right. I can't believe this is my last one. I've been doing this for two years. So just a quick little snapshot of what's been going on with our spring sports, starting with track and field. Both of our boys and girls outdoor track teams have a meet tomorrow at home, so looking forward to being able to show off. at home, so looking forward to being able to show off on our own field. Our varsity basketball team is having a great season with a record of, or varsity baseball, excuse me, is having a great season with a record of 11 and 2, while JV baseball is currently working hard, sitting at 4 and 5 and 1. In tennis, both the boys and girls teams are playing today. The girls are away at LCA, and the boys are at home, so best of luck to both of those teams. For soccer, the boys varsity team is 8 and 2 and 1, and continuing to build momentum is JV, holding a solid 4, or 5, 4 and 2. Our girls soccer team is crushing it with a 1 and 10 record, which is super impressive. They're a top performing sport this season. And then, for lacrosse, boys varsity is 5 and 4, girls varsity is 6 and 2, and they're both all working really hard to make the glass community proud. It's been a great season for athletics, and our students are both showing skill and spirit all across the board. And I just wanted to take a second to recognize an outstanding student athlete at EC Glass. Junior Izzy Smulik is graduating early because she's committed to playing Division 1 soccer at Liberty University. And not only is that a huge accomplishment athletically, but it also shows a level of dedication to school and academic readiness that she's put in to make this happen, and we're so proud of her, and we're really excited to see her at the next level. Next, I wanted to recognize two more student athletes who are honored with the EC Glass Boosters Excellence Award, one of the most meaningful recognitions for a glass athlete. So, congratulations to Kayden Patrick, who received the award for wrestling. The award is based on scholarship, leadership, integrity, and Kayden's an excellent example of all three of those. And special thank you to Coach Jeff McCall, who continues to be a great mentor to all the wrestling team. And I wanted to celebrate Will Wesley, who earned the Boosters Excellence Award for boys basketball. Will's commitment on and off the court really reflects the values of the award, and again, big thanks to Coach DJ for his leadership and support on the team. And the annual EC Glass AP and Senior Art Show is currently underway. A preview of the show is available in the lecture hall from, well, it's over now, but it was from the first to the fifth, and students got to show off, like a little, like a little preview of what they were going to do, and it was all amazing. I got to walk through there at one point. It was every, all the art was really impressive. And the official opening reception is going to take place at the Academy Center of the Arts on May 13th from 5 to 7. So, if you get a chance, check it out. We have a lot of really talented artists at Glass. This event features selected pieces from AP Art and Senior Art students, and it highlights, like, the creativity and the technical skill that it really takes to have developed throughout the years of doing all that artwork. Our spring musical Footloose had an amazing opening weekend. The energy, the choreography, the performances, it was all outstanding, really a statement to the hard work of our students and our staff. But if you haven't seen it yet, there are still opportunities to watch the show on Friday, May 9th at 7, and then Saturday, May 10th at 2 and 7, and it takes place in the Glass Auditorium, and tickets can be purchased on ecgtbooktix.com. So, come out and support our very talented cast. And we've officially entered exam season at EC Glass. AP exams started this week. I took my first one today, and students all across grade levels are working hard to just finish the year strong. And last week, our 11th graders completed the writing SOL, which is a major academic milestone for the juniors. And teachers and staff have been doing a great job of supporting all of us through kind of a high-stress time, so much appreciated to them. And I'm so excited to introduce the Student Leadership, or the Student Council Association Leadership Team for the upcoming school year. So, our president, who's returning, is Mary Stone. She's amazing. Vice President Audrey Miller, Secretary Harper Weeby, Treasurer Mason Minkler, Director of Public Relations Juliette Dop, and then next year's School Board Representative is going to be a good friend of mine, Claire Ramsey, and she's amazing. And these students were selected by the people already in leadership, and they're extremely qualified, and they're all really hardworking. And we'd love to welcome our new faculty advisors, Ms. Shuck and Ms. Williams, who are stepping into the roles. And unfortunately, that means we're going to be losing Ms. Gatz, but I know she's going to do fine no matter where she ends up, and Ms. Shuck and Ms. Williams are going to do amazing as well. And last Saturday, our juniors and seniors got to celebrate our big night to remember, which was prom. The event was a huge success. Everybody looked great dressed up, enjoying good music, and creating a lot of good memories. And a huge shout out to our culinary program for providing and preparing the amazing food that added just a really nice touch to everything, and their hard work really made everything a lot more special. It was a great opportunity for everybody just to get together. But I want to thank you guys for letting me come and present to you these past two years. It's really been a pleasure, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your service to the school board. I know that it's a very busy time during your senior years, but coming here and representing your schools, you've done a phenomenal job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Next one is public comments. Dr. Day.
Okay, we do have a few people who signed up to speak to us tonight. I will begin by reading the relevant portions of our policy about public comments at school board meetings. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to the public official or employee's official duties, or engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes, and the representative shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is 30 minutes, and voicemail messages will be played at the end of the in-person comments. Those are also limited to three minutes for individuals and five minutes for speakers. Priority will be given to in-person comments before voicemail in the following order. First, students, then staff, after that, parents or guardians, and lastly, community members. Okay, so we have four people signed up. The first is a student, Savannah Hicks. Is Savannah here?
Yes.
She just walked out.
So, she has spoken.
Yes, well, we heard from her, didn't we? Okay. Next, Steve Mortvet.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. My name is Steve Mortvet. I'm the account manager for the Blood Connection for the Lynchburg Territory. I moved up here, first of all, the Blood Connection is a local nonprofit blood bank. We have an office in Roanoke, and our mission is to bridge donors to the patients in need at the hospitals. I moved here to Lynchburg to talk to area businesses, civic organizations, churches, and in this case, the schools, about the need for blood donations and to partner with those entities, to help members of their local community save lives in their community. In a few, in the few minutes that I'm going to be talking with you, about 150 people will have needed blood. Every pint of blood can help save three lives. It can also help save eight patients, or eight babies' lives. So, the effect of blood donations really makes a huge impact. The biggest difference between us and other blood banks is we keep all the donated blood within the local communities. We are the exclusive provider for Carillion Hospital Systems. We also provide services to Lynchburg EMS, Christiansburg EMS, and UVA Health. We are here to help Lynchburg and the surrounding communities. In the cases of school, why I'm here is when a school hosts a drive where we get 30 donors, we're going to cut that school a check for $500. 60 donors means $1,000. Is there a possibility that Heritage High School, that EC Glass High School could use $500, $1,000 once or twice a semester? Also, we have scholarship opportunities for students who need extra funds for post-high school education. When a student organizes a blood drive where we get 30 donors, we're going to give that student a grant for $500 that they can use for their school. So, students like Savannah, she would crush, she would do amazing. So, I wonder too, are there students at EC Glass and Heritage that could maybe use some help with their post-high school career? We can help with that. All donors receive an e-gift card that they can use for retailers, restaurants, Visa Card, Master Card. So, from putting groceries on the table to getting supplies for school, for their kids, to just having a nice night out or paying a bill, we give our donors an incentive to help themselves as well as helping the community. We have partnered with Radford High School and Narrows High School, and we would love to partner with the high schools in this area as well. The great thing about working with high school students is if we can get the high school students excited, and we can make that a part of their lifestyle to regularly donate blood, when they're 16, if they start at 16, and they can, we just need to give them a parental consent form. But think about that over the next 50 or 60 years, if they regularly donate blood, they're going to impact well over 1,000 people directly, let alone all the people indirectly. I know that a lot of the high schools, a lot of the businesses, a lot of the churches that I've talked to have worked with the Red Cross, and I think that's great. That shows that this is a community that gets it, that likes the idea of donating, that sees the big picture. I want to stress that we do not see ourselves as us versus them, we're not in competition with the Red Cross. We're an additional resource for people to donate blood that like the idea of keeping the blood local. We don't look at it as all of them or all of us. You know, the donor pool is large. The patient need is even larger, so there's plenty of opportunities for all blood banks concerned to work with all the different organizations to collectively work together. We want to be part of the solution, and that's why I'm here, is to ask for your help to be part of the solution. I mentioned that I'm the account manager for this region. I prefer partnership coordinator because that's what it's all about, building relationships, building partnerships to save lives. We cannot do what we do without hosts. When various organizations help us with our mission, we help them with theirs. We help churches, the civic organizations, the nonprofits, and the schools in their mission, so that everybody wins. I'm hoping that we can all collaborate to work together between the school board, and again, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you, between the school board, the superintendents, the principals, the teachers, the staff, the Blood Connection, working together, we can save a lot of lives in this area. I am here to ask you for consideration of a possible last drive blood donation. I understand that the school term is coming to a close rapidly. A lot is on the table, but there may be time yet to still have a last drive to save lives. We make it very easy on our hosts. All we would need to do to make this happen would be to have space in the parking lot of the school for our blood mobile, access to a restroom for our donors and staff, and then somebody in the school system to help get the word out through social media. We do all the rest. We make it very easy. We don't ask for volunteers. We have the staff, we have the snacks, the drinks, the whole nine yards. And then we'll do the rest. In a five-hour, is my time up?
Yes.
I'm sorry, may I have one minute? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I ran out of time. Thank you very much.
Oh, is it possible to just leave some, I brought some stuff for everybody. Would it be okay?
Leave it with.
Thank you for your time. Sorry I ran out of room, but definitely check this out. Thank you.
Next is William Clark, or, excuse me, William Carter. William Carter.
Was he the husband?
He was the teacher.
Of the teacher.
Yeah.
Let's go to the next one.
Okay. Selena Morgan.
Ready?
Ready.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, how are you guys? So, coming to you guys, because there's a few things that I kind of want to bring to your attention. So, first thing, I am 100% an advocate for all things LCS, especially funding. I've gone to city council to support you guys, but I want to bring some things to your attention. This year, I had the privilege, and I don't know if I want to consider it a privilege, but I'd like to be able to think that there's some advocacy that will come out of this, with one of my children being sent to Fort Hill, okay? And so, some things, when you guys are formulating your budget and you're pushing some things through, I need you guys to consider how we can kind of support Fort Hill. Our students that are online lack support, okay? They lack support. There's kind of like a circle of trying to get things established, and they lack training. Why do I say this? It took me about three to four meetings for my kid to get access to her edmentum work. And when I say multiple meetings, and then realizing that for an entire semester or quarter, she had three assignments. That's, that's what the lack of, right? And so, the same teachers that sit in the classroom are responsible for the students online. So, what does that look like funding-wise? We need some additional support. And then you're like, well, dag, those are students that are in all ed, right? We still get tax dollars, and we still need to support them. All of our students that are placed at Fort Hill are not always, right? 100%. And I say 100%, I mean 100% at fault of being placed there. Why do I say that? Because my student that was placed there was actually sitting in her classroom, and she was assaulted. She came before the school board. They watched the video of her being assaulted. She actually walked out of that building in handcuffs, right? Because they said, well, she assaulted a teacher. But then after reviewing the data, the video, that teacher actually assaulted her first. So, what I really need us to do is, I want us to have funding. I want us to be able to support our teachers, our administration, but our students and our families are important. So, whatever we need to do, there's a whole picture, guys, and I get it, and we can't do everything, and across the street is hard. It's not an easy group, and they're nitpicking our funding. I get it. And I'm supporting you guys. So, but what I need us to do is also try and figure out what, what pieces and what can we do. Training for our staff, I came here before about the trauma-informed. They need it, okay? Response times, our teachers feeling supported in the classroom. I 100% believe and support that, but also, if you're in a classroom and you're afraid of your students, that's another conversation. That goes for administration as well, okay? So, I'm coming to you all as a parent, a community representative, and an advocate, because I'm always going to, like, I sit in those meetings, and I do play devil's advocate, because my kids have support, and they have an advocate that's going to show up, and it's going to make sure that everybody's accounted for, and they're doing their due diligence, as well as Lynchburg City Schools and staff in the building. But some of our kids don't have that. And so, when we identify barriers that they already have, and then we place additional barriers in front of them, saying you have to log on between this point, this time, in order for you to be counted as present, that's another barrier, and we can't do that. Or, you're coming into the building, right? You're meeting with a teacher, and then you're being marked absent. So, now I got to come to a truancy meeting. So, now, for me as a parent, my calendar is being, you know, my time, I'm being pulled away from work. So, I need us to start figuring out some whole pieces, and that goes for our babies in the classroom. It's not perfect, I get it, but let's figure out what we can do to support all of our kids, okay? That's all I wanted. I am 100% whatever I can do to push council for funding us. They're not going to fund us 100%, unfortunately, but that $2 million that they're trying to cut, we need it, okay? Hats off to all of you all. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's all the people who signed up in advance. Do we have any?
No voicemails.
No voicemail or no emails either? Okay. Well, that concludes the public comment period.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Next one will be a small closed meeting. Let me read. The school board chair recommends the school board approve a motion to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, the discussion of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of specific Lynchburg City School personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed?
Motion. Second.
Mr. DePaul, Dr. Day, Madam Clark, would you please call the room?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are in closed session. We'll go to the next door room. For the benefit of the public, let me say, we're expecting this to be very brief.
We'll be back.
So, we'll be back as quickly as we can.
Mr. DePaul, Mrs. Lowry, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Not everybody's here.
We've got the quorum.
Okay.
Mr. Jalil.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry.
Yes.
Motion carries.
No, you can take votes.
Dr. Tansley, we're coming out of closed session.
Coming out of the closed session.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Certification of closed meeting, the school board chair recommends school board approve a motion to convene. The school board chair approve a motion to convene, it's showing me the same document. Do you have it, Dr. Day, certification?
Can you read that?
Could you read it for me?
Okay. The school board chair recommends that the school board approve a motion. Oops, wrong one, school board.
It's the same. So, the motion is to certify that we didn't discuss anything different from what is applied, allowed by the Virginia Code.
The correct language didn't get ready.
2.2-3.311A1. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Jalil.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry.
Yes.
Dr. Tansley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we into consent agenda, is there a motion to amend the consent agenda to add an item?
We already did that.
We did, eh?
We did that when we amended the agenda.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda.
May I?
Mr. Connor and Mr. Jalil, would you, any discussion on consent?
I would like to withdraw number three.
So you making a substitute motion, or you first let's make a motion, that's seconded, then you make a substitute motion. His motion is not seconded yet. Mr. Connor is the second to approve.
I was seconding the original motion to submit the consent.
Who made that motion?
I don't think anybody did, but I'll make that motion.
You make that motion, he seconded? Now the motion is on the table, you have a substitute motion, Mr. Jalil?
He has an amendment.
Amendment to the motion.
Yes, I would just like to withdraw number three for a brief discussion on the HR
Can we just discuss it?
There needs to be a second before we discuss it.
No, no, there doesn't. I'm just withdrawing it, so we can briefly talk about it, and then it's the next thing that happens, and then you just go on from there, and you can approve the consent agenda. So basically, there's.
Wait a minute, we need a second to your motion before it gets discussed.
That's what.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, now you can discuss it.
I disagree with that, but it gets great, let's do that. Thank you. The, so I'd just like to reiterate that I would like these reports to somehow get to City Council, because they describe all the transfers, and the additions, and the separations that we get. So I'm just mentioning it, I just want to mention it again. We have approximately seventeen separations, that I think it'd be good for City Council to hear, or see, and somehow acquire on a regular basis. And then, I had a question about, remind me why there is a report addendum added to the consent agenda before simply adding the information to the regular report, the original report? Is it just the timing?
Because things kind of come in at the last.
I can address that question before you, Mr. Jalil. At the timeframe that the board agenda is established, Human Resources Officer, Office provides the current state of who they know is joining or departing the school division. On the Friday, close of business, so last Friday, they will also provide an update. So there's the primary report that goes in, and there's an addition to the report, which is capturing one week's worth of departures and arrivals. And then, for tonight's event, there is a specific addendum that I added to the HR report about the two appointments we just discussed. So that's why you see multiple iterations of it. And I, from the City Council looking at this, I would advise the board that you simply let them know once you approve your minutes, because all that information is in your minutes. And that they can, the minutes are published publicly.
Dr. Day.
So the motion on the floor is simply to remove item number three from the consent agenda.
Would you please call the roll?
Can I finish?
Sure.
I think there's no need for this, because as Dr. Copeland just explained, these human resources report are public information, any one of us can have their own initiative, forward them to anyone they want to. So it doesn't need action of the board for these to come before City Council. If you want them to see it, you send them an email. It's up to you.
The squeaky wheel gets the grease, so absolutely, I don't mind with, I am just wanting to speak about it, instead of it running through and no one talking about it, that's it. I'm not withdrawing it to completely off approval agenda. That's it. Last thing is, we had twenty-six separations, and ten whereby.
It hasn't been removed from the consent agenda yet. We're still on the motion of whether or not to remove it from the consent agenda, that's the issue on the floor.
If, like Dr. Day said, it's public information, because anybody can look at the program that we're having, can't City Council just do that as well?
Okay, just a second.
Well, they can just look at it, like any parent or anybody else, they can just look at it themselves.
Yes, and I could look at the tax code for so many different things if I had the knowledge that it was updated, or something, right? So we can indicate to them that this is updated, and they can check it out. But, it may not be in the wheelhouse, so it's up to us to share it, yes.
I think you defeat your purpose by taking it off, because once it not, does not become, it's off the minutes, it's not in the public purview, then they can't see it. So I just don't see why, what benefit there is to taking it off of the consent. I agree, and you're talking about it, it's a good thing, but I don't see what taking it off the consent agenda does.
No, I want to pass it, I want, today, I don't want to take it off and it, let it go on to another meeting. I just want to withdraw it to, if I needed to discuss it, and then allow it to go back on. Now, I can make a motion to put it back on immediately, but if you simply look at it, it has a couple of the Roberts rules that allow for this to happen. I'm not taking it off permanently. I just want to discuss it, just like we're doing, and I was about done. We're discussing taking it off, but, can you pull it up, the HR report?
Yeah, we have it here.
Okay. There's one, two, three, I mean, the consent agenda, there's one, two, three, and four, right? If you look at one, click on one, click on two, click on three, and then read the small print that's under each one, it simply allows any board member to withdraw any item from the consent agenda without a second. So that is what I was doing, and I'd simply wanted to talk about it, and then allow it to pass. That's it, I just didn't want it to pass without, without comment, some comments.
It does say.
If you read the last sentence of that little miniature.
Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. So if it comes out of the consent agenda, and there has been a request, that means it just becomes a next business item after we're done with the consent.
That's what I'm asking for a vote.
Yeah.
To remove item three.
I don't think it needs a vote, it says may be removed at the request of.
So you requested it, it's out of the consent.
It's out of consent agenda.
We move on, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your new item is still part of the consent agenda, we'll come to a clarification.
But we're not discussing your item now, it's the consent agenda minus item three.
Yeah.
Come back later on for discussion.
Today, great.
Yeah. So would you please call, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move, we approve the consent agenda.
We did it?
Yes.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Jalil.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston. Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry.
Yes.
Dr. Tansley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next is finance report.
No, no, we, Dr. Copeland.
I'm sorry, I'm very proud of you. Dr. Copeland.
Pittsburgh City Schools is happy to announce two key leadership appointments with Dr. Jennifer Davis as the next Deputy Superintendent of Instruction Programs, and Josh Boyd as the next Principal of Paul Monroe Elementary School. Dr. Davis currently serves as the Director of Teaching and Learning, and will succeed Deputy Superintendent Amy Pugh, who is retiring after forty years, after a forty-year career in education. Mr. Boyd will step into the principal role at Paul Monroe after long-term Principal Donna Baer retires after her forty years at the end of this school year. Since her time, during her time as the Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Davis has had a significant impact. She's led implementation of the Division's All-In Initiative to address learning loss, and launched the New Teacher Academy to support, and develop new educators. Josh Boyd brings two decades of experience to his new role as principal. He currently serves as the Principal on Special Assignment, helping both Paul Monroe and Sandusky. In previous roles, he was the Principal of the Virtual Academy, Assistant Principal at Sheffield Elementary, and his secondary instructional coach. Congratulations to both of you.
So now, I think we come to the removed item.
The removed item?
Yeah.
All right, you're the parliamentarian, removed item.
So, on the table is the Human Resources Report, and I get, I will make a motion that we accept it.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion?
Not on the motion, but I just wanted to talk about it briefly, and that is that it's twenty-six separations with ten by Liberty University students. When I saw that, I thought, in the, and in their first one to three years, I think one was a little different, but, I said, I would like it to be more as, more like military recruiting for a four-year commitment. And, whether or not that is something that we can do, I don't like it, right, I just like to discuss it, because it's not a good thing if we have one- and two-year teachers leaving the system. You have seven children, I mean, seven teachers leaving one school. You have ten Liberty University students leaving in their first three years, some of them one, some of them first two years. What's the issue? Is it Liberty University, is it being local, or is it the school itself? Well, they're in different schools, so I'm not so sure it's the school, and the environment. I would like that, I would like to understand that, I would like something to be done to understand it, a little survey and study.
Mrs. Lowry.
When I was teaching, okay, I taught a conversation with Ann Berry, and then, and this was a good ten years ago, at least, we couldn't keep teachers past five, new teachers past five years then. So it's not like it's a new epidemic coming on, this has been ongoing. So, and because we're a right-to-work state, you can't make someone stay for a certain amount of time, just so you know.
Right, that's why I would just sort of prefer, basically, that would be like a four-year commitment, as the military does. And I just want to discuss what we can do to help them to make the commitment. Incentives, I think I've heard some places pay off debt, educational debt from new employees. But to have ten of them coming, leaving from one institution, maybe simply because it's local, I think we have to look at that and understand it. Because if they're one- and two-year teachers from just one institution, but the other institutions are, are having a longer stay employee here, then there may be other reasons than we understand for these.
But if, if teachers are given an opportunity to have an exit interview, I would think that the data from those exit interviews would be available to the persons in Human Resources, and that could be investigated to determine if there is a problem at that school, or in dislocation, or people coming from the other school, or whatever it is, because the goal is to retain teachers, not, and we certainly don't have the resources to give a monetary incentive to people to keep them on board. What we want to do is to do the things that are going to keep them on board, because we're doing the things that we need to do as administrators, and/or as people that are looking for teachers to hire.
And just so you know, last year, when we saw the same thing, I actually reached out to many of them, and some were pregnant, some there was a job move to be closer to family, it wasn't always something negative. There were personal reasons.
Dr. Day. We are not addressing the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is whether or not to approve the Human Resources Agenda. We're addressing the concerns that Mr. Jalil has raised, but those are not the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is simply, are we going to approve the HR Agenda or not? I'd like to ask that we call for the question.
Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor.
Do you approve the HR, HR report or not?
Yes or no?
I approved it when it was in the consent agenda, so now we're back to approving it?
Yeah, we're just asking, do you approve it or not?
I approve it as, as.
Yeah, we haven't changed it, it's still the same HR report.
I vote yes, as it was submitted by Human Resources.
Mr. Jalil.
And before I vote yes, because I approve of it also, after I withdrew it, I just wanted to discuss it, and that's how it should be. So after we all approve that it's added back to, and it's approved, then there's no more discussion of it. So that's why I think it's valuable to do the withdrawal, discuss, and now it's going to be over. I'm not going to discuss it anymore. I just brought up those points, and I really don't have any other points to share about it, other than.
Point of order is the vote now.
Yeah, we need your vote, please.
Discussion is over.
That is, okay, now, if you go back into the videos of LCS for the last few months, you will see that you allowed other board members to do what I'm doing right now.
Let me.
I'm a hundred percent positive about that.
Welcome to the club, because the retention rate between zero to four years is about seventy percent. If you had watched the previous reports for last six years I've been on board, zero to four is most of the drainage happens. Why it happens? There's a lot of issues, salaries, benefits, we don't have money to pay the money which counties are paying. Young people switch jobs, because they got growing families to take care of. Issues are there, but the problem is, they're brought up like this just happened yesterday, that's not true. It's been happening, I've been on board, this is my seventh year, seventy percent is the retention rate on average, seven, zero, thirty percent leave. So we should not blow it out that it just happened, and it's just like a brand-new story, headline news. It's not. I've been seeing it for six years. That's why each year, me and Mr. Andrews have been doing seventeen fifty, seventeen fifty, there's a reason for that. So, the minimum base salary, I know people want salary for veterans, perfectly fine, but for the young folks, you need that base salary increase, and that's what this board is doing this year. But to go anything higher will require more cash upfront in the operating budget. Not in one-year budget, multi-year operating budget, do you understand? In business, you cannot have just one-time money to pay support salaries, you got to have ongoing budget. So, I understand that making headlines to just bring it up, but this has been in the headlines for the years, this is not a brand-new issue. But the problem is, the solution, we don't have the resources to implement. You can love them, you can admire their work, but end of the day, the county steal them from us for a couple of thousand dollars. That's a fact of life. Would you please say your vote?
Thank you, I'm satisfied, yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry.
Yes.
Dr. Tansley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is finance report, Dr. Copeland.
All right, over to our Chief Financial Officer for a brief report.
Good evening, Chairman Gupta, members of the board, and Dr. Copeland. I will be very brief in my remarks this evening, so hang on. The financial reports that you have before you are as of March 31st, 2025, which marks seventy-five percent of the fiscal year passing, and it's passing quickly. The percent of revenues collected versus original appropriation was at sixty-four point one-five percent. The amount of expenditures versus the original appropriation was at sixty-nine point zero three, year-to-date. Total expenditures inclusive of the encumbrances that we have set aside equates to ninety-five percent. As of March 2025, our health insurance ended in a positive position, taking in two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and ninety cents, more in receipts than we paid out in disbursements. Yay, hopefully that will become a trend. Brown Edwards auditors will be here the week of June 16th through the 20th to start the fiscal year 2025 annual audit process. We're all looking forward to that. That is, concludes the end of my report, and if you have any questions, we can move on, yes.
Dr. Day. Since we are funded categorically, we cannot move funds between any of the major categories.
That's correct, sir.
And, at least, the facilities category looks like it's two-hundred-and-fifty-seven percent of the budgeted amount, if I'm reading this correctly. Line eighty of the expenditures report?
Line eighty of the expenditure report?
Yes.
Is the non-instructional operations.
Yeah.
Not, not maintenance.
Okay, so, my question is, do we need to move funds between categories to account for that?
So, there will be some true-up after May 30th, once all of, we're sure what those accounts will have in it, and I don't believe at the time we're going to have to do that. Well, so can I, but, yes, go ahead.
Is that particular ones to that, a particular line? Related to personnel, so you'll see there is a personnel line for that facilities. So that is to pay the construction project manager, which ultimately gets paid by the capital improvement fund, so it will get trued up.
So it'll go out at this.
This is just a timing issue.
Yeah.
Sure, after May 30th, yes.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
Thank you. Next one is special education annual plan, Dr. Copeland.
Ms. Ashley Burks, our Director of Special Education, to the podium to talk about the annual plan. Ms. Burks, floor is yours.
All right, hello, everyone, it's a pleasure to be in front of you this evening, so I'm going to try to be brief, and so what we want to do is just discuss the needs of our students with, that have disabilities. First and foremost, our sort of mantra for the Special Education Department is people over-programming. I know that there is a lot of red tape, protocols, budget, and funding for our students, but remember, there is a face of our kids at the end of that, and wonderful, wonderful, fantastic special education teachers that support them each and every day. So, for the VDOE, they ask a couple of things. The first part is making sure that our students, that we are following the mission and the vision of LCS, and how we are removing those barriers for our students with disabilities. We are definitely committed, we're making sure that we're engaging them in the classroom, providing those accommodations that they need, and for even our students that are placed in private schools or home schools, that we are supporting them as well. We also, as a part of that, is asking, is there any barriers to equitable access for our students? And, as one of the things we talked about today was new staff, so sometimes when you are coming into a classroom, you have twenty kids, six of them have an IEP, that's a lot to kind of take on, and so what we want to do is address one of those barriers through fundamental training and a systematic process, so that they have support throughout the year with regular check-ins, ongoing training, and we also have resources from the VDOE and TTAC to kind of come in and train you on how to interact and teach students with disabilities of various levels. So one of the questions also ask, how are we doing that throughout the year? Some, doing some of that before the school year starts, doing full-blown training, role-playing, having experts in there that can do that coaching, and then doing a systematic process throughout each quarter of the year, so that they have mentorship and support as they go throughout. The next part of the plan asks about our local and regional jails, so we also support our students who are in Blue Ridge Regional Jail, so we do have a coordinator that goes over there, ensures that those students still have their free and appropriate education, and seeing what they need, and making sure that their IEP goals are met as well. MOE for Maintenance of Effort, for our school year for 2526, for local plus state, is fourteen million nine-hundred-sixty-five-thousand-six-hundred-eighty-eight dollars. We're making sure that we use those funds for our students to meet their needs, there are so many things that you have to have in the classroom to make sure that you instruct individualized for each student, whether that they have autism, Down Syndrome, ADHD, whatever that disability is, that we are being able to fund what they need, and give the teachers materials as well. Another part is for our proportionate set-aside funds, and this is specifically for students who are parentally placed in private schools or are homeschooled, we are still required to provide them their education, therefore, we have a teacher and a speech-language pathologist, which gives them direct services. So that supports students, you know, articulation, any classwork, and any deficits that they have. So for that, for 611, that is our three to 21, we have a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-nine-hundred-forty-six dollars, that is making sure that we can pay our staff members, and then in addition, making sure that they have the benefits as needed. For section 619, I like to think of that as our pre-K babies, for our younger students for two to five, and they have allotted one-thousand-three-hundred-ninety-nine dollars. For grant Part B, 611 Grant Fund, we want to make sure that we have our funds to support our personnel and benefits, that includes multiple special education staff, that includes your teachers, your school psychologists, your. school psychologists, your BCBA's or board-certified behavior analysts, and any clerical and administrative staff. So it really does take a team to be able to support our students with special needs. Um, and by doing this, not only are we ensuring that they have instruction, um, this also includes ESY, which is extended school year, so making sure that we can support our students throughout the summer if they need that remediation and any goals that they didn't meet. Um, in addition to making sure that documentation is maintained and that we are following compliance guidelines with the VDOE. For codes, uh, three thousand, we want to be able to use contracted services to add in some programming, um, that LCS desperately needs, so be able to help with our transitioning for our high school students so that we can have better career, um, and job opportunities, or if they need to go to college, um, before that burden has been placed on our teachers who are teaching in the classroom. So we want to have those resources to be able to relieve that from our staff, but order, in order to make sure that our students are reaching out with different services. So we have wonderful programs like DARs, Step Up, they do a fantastic job supporting our students with disabilities. And so, um, to get our students, um, to graduation and beyond is the key word there, we're gonna need services to be able to support them. Um, in addition, uh, more instructional, um, support for special education staff, and that looks like academic coaches. So being able to teach a student with disabilities, there's different teaching methods that you kind of need to be, um, well-versed in, so being able to train our teachers on how to teach best, whether that is in a more self-contained setting where it's just students with disabilities, or if they're in a general education classroom, being able to work along with that, uh, general education teacher so that we can, uh, provide them with the best instruction possible. And then lastly, we, we want to add funds for code six thousand for iPads, uh, Chromebooks, adaptive seating, standardized test kits, um, instructional supplies and educational software. So a lot of time for our students that need assistive technology, you have to continue to have ongoing so that they can use it throughout the year. So for example, if a student is non-verbal and they cannot speak and they use pictures on an iPad, it's not a one-time purchase, we have to continue that. We don't take away our students' voices, we lift them up. And so, um, that funding is needed to be able to support our students. And then lastly, under, uh, grant six nineteen is for our early childhood, um, so think of that as our younger students or our pre-K students. Um, we are using code one thousand and two thousand to be able to support our staff with being able to pay them along with their benefits. Um, in addition, we're looking at programming for their communication skills and cognitive development. Our, um, pre-K teachers over at, um, Hutcheson definitely need that support in order so that they are teaching throughout the day and then being able to receive that additional training for curriculum and adaptive functioning. And lastly, we also want to have con- contracted or purchased services, um, for web-based assessments. That's a whole lot easier than paper pencils, so if we are able to track our students' progress, um, and then we can continue to meet their goals in more of a developmental way, um, for our younger students in our district. In addition, for staff development, um, being able to coordinate with TTAC conferences and getting more of that instructional support. And then lastly, code six thousand for our younger students, we're really focusing on our sensory items and motor skill development and skills to be able to support them. That is all that I have. Do you all have any questions?
Yeah, I have.
Thank you, Dr. Day.
So I just want to understand this report a little bit better. Is this primarily just, uh, mandatory reporting and certification, or is part of this a request for funds that requires approval? Because I do see on two pages, like on page thirteen, it says proposed grant budget. Are we asking for this money, or are we just explaining how we're gonna spend money that's already allocated?
Both. So this, we do have to turn this into the, the state, but we have to be able to justify what we're using those funds for, and it is all for our students and for our special education, um, teachers and related services like psychologists and speech pathologists.
So, before we can spend the money in the way that you've described, we have to wait for authorization?
We have to submit it to VDOE, so it goes from me, um, into the superintendent at this time, which is Dr. Copeland, and then is submitted to the state. Um, and if there's any amendments at any time, you're allowed to do that as well.
But then do we need to wait to hear back from the state before we can move ahead with it?
They...
All right. So, uh, there are certain components of the funding that if you look in the governor's budget, you will see some line-outs specifically for special education that are in the governor's budget proposal. These grants related to IDEA, which is the support for students with special needs, uh, are based off of the reporting that we provide to the Virginia Department of Education on a recurring basis. So our authorizations move up and down on a regular basis depending on the number of students and the needs that they have. So the grant components of this are kind of automatically, uh, coming from the state on a regular basis. Uh, we at least do three reports, I think, through the year related to special education services and things like that, in addition to having VDOE monitoring, uh, visits to look at how special education funds are being expensed and the support we're providing.
So what I'm trying to get at is VDOE's come back at us and say, we don't like the way you're allocating it, please change it. Does that ever happen? Are you at all concerned about something like that?
No.
No, that's what I wanted to hear. No.
No.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
How many students are in Blue Ridge Regional?
Um, at this time, I think there are about six.
Okay.
You have six students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
What is the success of your grant writing in the last two years?
So I was just appointed to this position for this year in January.
And how many have you done? I'm just kidding. Um, I asked for the last two years.
She wasn't here the last two.
She wasn't here.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, I was asking for the department, your, Ms. Pew.
For the special education department? This is required by the Department of Education under IDEA, Individuals Disability Education Act. This is required for us to submit this annual plan that talks about how we're proposing to spend the money and the money that's being allocated. It has never been rejected, um, so it, it is not, uh, in a way, it's not a competitive grant.
That's the right one.
So it isn't, it is not something that we are writing, competing with others, waiting to hear from VDOE. It is, this is part of the bureaucracy, if I may, um, that, that we have to do each year. So if going back past twenty-five years, I would say we've had success every year because it's not competitive. It is given to us and awarded, and, you know, I don't have any concerns unless the governor doesn't have a budget, um, I don't have any concerns that we're not gonna receive the money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burks.
All right, thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is the Jubilee Drive Elementary, Dr. Copeland.
I'll turn it over to Dr. Woddeco for a quick update on some rezoning issues and affected students.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Dr. Copeland, and, and good afternoon, members of the board. Um, just a, a quick overview of, of this presentation. Uh, on the first slide, um, I just provided some background information. I won't go over it with you because we all recently lived it, uh, but this often helps us for going back for historical purposes. But, uh, you all recall that we made some adjustments to some of the attendance zones, uh, related to elementary schools, um, specifically related to the Winston Ridge, Florida Avenue area, um, as well as the Birch, uh, Birchwood area. Um, and, uh, we're gonna make a, make an adjust, a recommendation for an adjustment here, uh, based on that option. Um, so just a couple, a little bit of information based on, on zoning. Um, so Lynchburg City Schools actually has, uh, two different databases of the elementary and middle and high school zoning. Uh, the first is the School Finder application, which is something that's manually, uh, maintained by the school division, uh, you find it on the, the school division's website. Uh, the city also maintains a geographic information system database or a GIS database. Um, and so I want to point out, so the city maintains that, it's separate, um, which, uh, we would assume that there would be a link between those two databases, but there is not. Uh, and so we've, we've now learned that there are a number of discrepancies between the two databases, um, and it absolutely is the school division's responsibility to notify the city when there are updates. Uh, that's not something that we've done in my three years that we've been here, uh, but over time, of course, there have been adjustments as, uh, that has occurred. We are now conducting a citywide review to make sure that, that zoning is accurate, uh, on those, uh, city maps. Uh, we feel like the School Finder app is, is the most accurate at this point, and so we're making those adjustments, and we have developed a process to resolve that. So I want to specifically identify the Jubilee Drive, the Sheffield Island Zone. Island Zone is not an official term, but it's one that we just use as, uh, a, a part of what we do. Uh, in the current zoning, there is a, a small elementary zone, uh, along Jubilee Drive that's not depicted on the zoning maps and was not taken into account, uh, during prior discussions. Uh, and when I was writing this, I was thinking, uh, I'm looking, thinking Mr. Connor should say, you should talk to transportation and do that. So, and to that I say, you're absolutely right. And so, uh, so, so I, I appreciate that. Um, the screen is restarting, um, but I'll, I'll continue to talk. Um, most homes on this street were built in the late nineties, um, and, uh, we have to assume that was added to Sheffield at that time, uh, because there was not, there probably was not space at Heritage at that time. Um, that was apparently never updated in the city GIS, and so the only way to, for us during this process to know that this was a part of Sheffield, again, other than talking to transportation, which we should have done, uh, is to check every, uh, single address manually, uh, for those affected students. And so, we have now double and triple-checked, uh, all the addresses in the, the affected area to make sure that they were accounted for correctly, correctly. Uh, and the reason we're bringing it to you is that it, we, we believe that it's school, that school board's intent, that everyone sort of in that area would be zoned for Bass and not sort of the long-range area, but we didn't talk about Sheffield. And so I think that it's the most important thing is that we just get it out on the table and say, what is the intent? Let's be honest about where we are, uh, let's be clear about what the intent was, so that the board can take an affirmative vote, uh, based on your, your prior, your action. Um, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, uh, if you rezoned that area, that very small area, uh, to Bass, it would affect two households, a total of five students. Uh, we have contacted each of those families. Um, I've talked to one of the families and, and then Mrs. Lee at Sheffield has talked to the other. Um, they are amenable to the idea, um, of moving, and so that's, uh, a positive thing, if that's the school board's decision. On the next slide, if you were to see it, uh, you would, uh, hopefully it's on your computer.
It is.
Um, you'll, you'll see what the, what the zoning, this was my whole thing, right? Uh, I had a...
He worked hard on this.
We see it, I see it here.
You can see it. So, uh, on there, you can see what the heritage zone looks like on the GIS, uh, database, which you can see there is, and I'll show you in just a moment where the Jubilee Drive is. Uh, you can see where Bass and Heritage is on the next slide. You can see that, that island zone that's not depicted in GIS, what it should look like. That's, that's, that's slide six, I guess. Um, so that is the way that the, the, the slide should, the, the zoning should look. Um, again, it does not look like that, uh, it looks like the one before that, um, so we've addressed that. So a couple of recommendations here, uh, we'd recommend that Jubilee Drive be, um, uh, zoned for Bass Elementary School in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, um, that, that small zone. Again, we, we think we need to communicate with families immediately. Again, we've already done that, uh, had great conversations. Uh, we also are going to conduct a discrepancy review between School Finder, uh, and the city GIS, that's already underway, uh, and we'll update the GIS mapping to accurately reflect, reflect the zoning's, uh, the, the adopted zones. Again, that's already underway as well. So, um, that's a very brief overview. Um, again, um, just, that's a process of learning, and so we appreciate that. Yes, sir?
That little Sandusky in blue, is that Washington Street, um, coming off Gray Street?
Uh, I can't, I can't speak to that.
Hudson.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not sure about that. I, I think that's probably a little close, but I, I can find out.
That's another, that's right in the middle of the Bass zone, why, you know, we're to, what are we picking up?
I think that's...
I think it's off of Gray Street, that little...
I think that's connected to a little bit larger Sandusky Zone. Certainly, certainly if the, if the, the idea is to address some of these small island zones, that would be an important thing to do at some point.
Okay, but right now, I agree, totally agree that that should be going, they should be on the same buses going to Bass.
Are you making a motion to approve it?
I make a motion to approve.
Second to the motion.
Second.
It's allowed, the discussion on this motion. Madam President, would you please call the roll?
Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next one is TC Miller Hutcheson renaming, Dr. Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. As we start moving forward and thinking about the next school year, uh, I am recommending that you adopt two new names, uh, called the TC Miller Building, the TC Miller Academy, and change the Hutcheson Early Learning Center to the Hutcheson Academy. That puts both of our pre-K buildings underneath the same naming structure. Uh, it also, uh, will allow use of Title I funds to support, uh, the, uh, pre-K children, uh, and, uh, it gets us set up for the start of the school year.
Mr. Connor?
I'm just curious as to, go ahead.
Go ahead, you, go ahead, you start it.
Is there, is there anybody, any discussion in recording the history of TC Miller or Hutcheson anywhere?
I have not had any.
Is that something that's been done with other schools?
The only school I know there's a well-documented history of use is Dunbar?
Yeah.
Middle School, uh, due to its history as the, uh, black high school years ago.
And I've heard some things about EC glass historically, so is that something that we can consider for those schools?
I would just need direction from the board on how you would like to proceed.
All right.
Um, I don't, I'll leave it at that.
That's all.
Mr. Connor?
Um, is there a reason we can't, there can't be the TC Miller Early Learning Academy? Does that affect the Title I if we add the word?
Yes, sir, it does. That's exactly why.
So all we can just be straight academy, there's no other? We need the money?
No, it's not that we need the money, it's that we can then use the resources that we currently have.
Okay.
To help those children.
Okay.
Just support early literacy and math. Currently Hutcheson does not, does not have the benefit of receiving any Title I services for their students because they have early learning center in their title.
Okay.
So we would like to be able to, and, um, the principal for years has been, you know, asking and, you know, sharing the need for Title I support, and it's just additional resources that are allocated to the school in terms of, um, teaching, staff, support, coaching, that type of thing, also, um, some, uh, parent events and things like that. So it's beneficial to both of those schools if we do not have early learning in the title.
I would like to move that we approve these two renaming suggestions.
Second to them.
Second.
For any more discussion? Madam President, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next one is school board member reports, cop school, Mrs. Laurie.
Okay, our next meeting is May seventh, tomorrow, um, so, and after that, it will be August sixth. I did attend the senior recognition ceremony on Sunday as well as onsite dinner with Dr.
as well as an inside dinner with Dr. Gupta, Mrs. Preston, board members. But the selection update is of the full class of seventy-five juniors has been done and that have been committed to year twenty-five, twenty-six. Parents are filling out registration forms. A new student orientation is June ninth through the eleventh and August fourth.
Laurel, again you, Mrs. Laurie.
Okay, for Laurel. The next meeting is also May seventh. So we have a couple meetings tomorrow, Dr. Copeland. But the ribbon ceremony for the new bus and bench dedication in honor of a teacher who has passed, Martha Lipscomb, was donated by a Scout One Eighty troop. So that was really nice to see. And I believe I sent you all pictures of the, the new bus that they have now received. That was the ribbon cutting ceremonies for. And then the bench dedication. So our next meeting is tomorrow, and I'll have more information next time.
Thank you. STEM Academy, Mr. Connor.
Unfortunately, this past Sunday, they had their awards banquet. No, matter of fact, Tuesday, May thirteenth, and I intend to be there, which is next Tuesday after the finance and facilities meeting, if we have it that day. But they're having their STEM Academy Senior Awards banquet. They did have something this past Sunday that I was unable to attend because I was out of town at the time. But I will have a further report on the, how many were named, which I gave a little bit of that last time we met, on how many students were accepted and how many applications were received.
Thank you. Finance and Facilities Chair, Mr. Connor.
We have not had a meeting since. We came up with the proposal, with the TC Miller proposal, and then the joint meetings with the city council. We're going to be scheduling one very shortly. I'm looking at the thirteenth right now, it's Tuesday, and we're going to be looking at some facilities. And hopefully we'll have some numbers. I think the city finance committee meeting today. I think the governor has released his budget, so hopefully we'll be able to actually look at, look and do some planning, facilities planning for this upcoming summer season.
Thank you. LSCR Chair, Mr. Jaleel.
We have our next meeting on May twentieth at three thirty P.M. And we'll be discussing some of the different bills that approve or disapprove of. Thank you.
Thank you. Academic Success Committee Chair, Mrs. Laurie.
Our next meeting is May twenty-seventh. Our last meeting, we discussed PD, literacy, coaches, math schedules, teacher treasure box, which is ongoing development. Still waiting on the math adoption from the VDOE. Two centers joining senior night and the preschool testing. And we also have a schedule bring next time for the testing schedule.
Thank you. Next one is by Mr. Andrews and Dr. Tinsley.
No change to what we reported last time. We're still waiting until June for our next meeting.
Thank you. Next is Ed Foundation, Mr. DePaul and Mr. Jaleel.
There's been no liaising.
I like that.
Sunday, they had a very nice senior honor dinner.
It's very nice.
It's a wonderful thing to see our high school graduates. You know.
Next one is Becomer Hope, Mr. Andrews and Mrs. Preston.
I have nothing to report.
No liaison. What did you say?
No liaising.
Took place.
That is a missed mistake. No liaison. I like that.
Thank you. Next one is Superintendent Carmen, Dr. Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief. About four weeks of school left to go. And as our seniors this evening alluded to, AP testing is in full swing and SOL testing. Graduation, please put on your calendars, is Sunday, June the eighth, two P.M. and six P.M. The Vine Center on the campus of Liberty University. And if you have time this weekend, please go see Footloose, EC Glass. They will close the show. I think that is the last performing arts show of the season for the school year. Those students have worked hard, so please support them if you have time this weekend to see the show. That's all I have.
What times did you say the two times for the graduations were?
Two P.M. is Heritage and six is Glass.
Thank you, Dr. Copeland. Next one is Board Comment, Mr. Connor.
No comments.
Mr. Jaleel?
Thank you. The twenty-twenty-five Virginia History Day Contest Special Award winners had some in LCS. There are winners all over the state. And one was Brenton S. Haley Teaching Excellent Award, Darrington Elementary School, Teacher Janet Bates. Virginia History Day District Teacher of the Year Award, Michael Bronsmur. Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School for Innovation. Brosmer. Also, on April twenty-sixth, exhibit winners. We had fourth place, Raison Vasquez, Virginia Blair of Linkhorn Middle School, Teacher Tristan Burke for Loving Versus Virginia, The Right to Love. We had another fourth placer, Cameron Horsley, Jacob Jacobi Good, Keegan Bush of Darrington Elementary for their writing Jackie Robinson. The teacher is Janet Bates. We have another fourth place winner, different category, for Leo Kudlick for Adolf Hitler and the Holocaust, Teacher Janet Bates again. We had a second place winner, Harmony Spinner, Jersey Hall, Waverly Thomasi, Eleanor Fontaine, Eve Flavin for writing Davis versus City School Board of Edward, Edward County. Teachers Tristan Burke and Trae Young Griffin. And we did have a first place winner for writing, the writing The Rise, I say writing, but it's a presentation, The Rise and Fall of the Berlin Wall. Aria Gugliotta, Mac Morrison, Clayton Cox of Linkhorn Middle School, with teacher Trae Young Griffin.
Thank you. Next one is Mr. Andrews.
Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all teachers out there. And to council, we really need that five-point-five million, so come on, come on through with it. Need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Day? No comment. Thank you. Mrs. Preston?
I, I agree with, with what Mr. Andrews said. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we really do need to show our appreciation to teachers. That is one of the hardest jobs ever. Requires a lot of time, energy, and dedication. And most teachers aren't in it for the money. They obviously need money to survive, but they're in it because they love kids and because they want what's best for them. And when we see students like the ones we've seen here in the last few days, we recognize what, what a difference a good teacher can make in a child's life. So thank you for all that you do.
She stole my thunder, exactly what I would have said.
Mr. Paul, nothing. Thank you. Mrs. Laurie?
I want to say thank you to all the teachers and administration for all you do. You are so very appreciated. The students of LCS are better because you pour yourselves into their lives through education and so much more. Congratulations to all the teachers recognized for inspiring students at the Governor's School and Honor Society. And thank you Don Wise and Education Foundation for helping the students with their next steps. Thank you to Randy Dutton, who with the Legacy Center for the most recent six CCPS graduates who successfully employed, were employed earning sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year from ages eighteen to twenty. That is just amazing. You're a truly an asset to our LCS students. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Dr. Tinsley?
Yeah, and just reiterate what everyone else is saying, but thank you to the teachers. It's wonderful to have such a great group of folks out there leading our children into the future. And Mr. Jaleel, thank you for reading those names. I had sent those to Dr. Copeland, and you stole my thunder. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any comments. So next is closed session. Let me read it. The School Board Chair recommends, "School Board, approve a motion to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following as permitted by the Virginia Code two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A-one, personal matter involving discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for the superintendent position in the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of specific Lynchburg City School personnel." Is there a motion?
Motion.
To go into closed session? Second. Would you please call the roll, Madam?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll go upstairs.